I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. McCoslin.
One second. Mrs. Feis, Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Mrs. Janasik.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mr. Christiansen.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. First on the presentations tonight is Mr. Kevin Hayes with the Hayes Design Group with an update on the bus garage.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I believe the board received a handout prior to start of this meeting. It's being displayed right now. Overall, the project continues to move pretty well. Unfortunately, the contractor has hit some delays, and it's not just last week or the week before. There's been a little bit of a cumulative delay caused by some weather, some permits, also some long lead time items like electrical panels that were needed. Overall, I think the board's aware there is no normal in construction right now, and because of that, Foligno, the contractor, is doing everything they can. They are working hard to resolve issues and have resolved many of them, including, if the board remembers, there was a lot of extra dirt moving that we did in order to mitigate the amount of dirt that was taken off-site. The cumulative effect, though, is we're getting down to the last 10 yards of the 100-yard dash, and there are certain sequence of constructions such as they have to build the concrete curbs first before they can do some of the base paving, before they can do the finished paving, et cetera. So they are moving forward as quickly as they can. The good news is with the weather cooperating as much as it has, asphalt plants are remaining open. What we learned from Foligno is they don't expect any issues with regards to getting the asphalt they need when they need it towards the end of the month, because as long as there are PennDOT projects going on, at least one asphalt plant will be open, and right now there's more than a few PennDOT projects continue to proceed because of the favorable weather. So that's where we are, and that's really all that needs to be said. And then really any questions or any comments that the board or administration want to add?
Questions from the board?
I do, and I think this just goes so the public knows where we're all sitting. The lease with South Hills Village will need to be extended, and where are they going for the Christmas holiday season with the buses? Asphalt paving is not till after Thanksgiving. I believe in prior things, we were paving before Thanksgiving so that the buses could be back in the garage at that point in time. So a couple of updates on those kinds of things for us and for the public, just so everybody knows. I understand that asphalt is still staying open, but you know, with next week's weather forecast, is there going to be a complete closure of that?
No.
Okay.
They will remain open.
Which is good, yes. So our lease with the village, South Hills Village, ends Friday. They have agreed to extend us through Tuesday, the 22nd, that's the week of Thanksgiving, and then the district administration's looking to relocate the buses at that point until the paving is completed the first week of, like, the week after Thanksgiving. Got several options that we're going to explore, and we'll have something, you know, ready to go by that point in December. Dr. Jan Sandy was volunteering his driveway for the buses.
I just have one other question. How long after the asphalt goes down can we put a bus on it? I know it's different than a car because of the tonnage.
Right. Again, we'll try to get that answer specifically for you, but I would say, you know, seven to 10 days.
After completion and seal, correct?
Correct. Right. It just, yes, the pavement has to settle and harden somewhat in order to support the weight of a bus, particularly the turning of wheels by a bus. That creates a lot of stress on the asphalt surface.
Correct.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Have a great night. Next up, I believe, on the agenda is Cassie with Draw Collective on the new K-5 elementary project.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Nice to be with you again tonight. Was there? I found it. So tonight, we're just here to give you a general update. I think that we've shown you this graphic in the past. It's a conceptual project timeline, just kind of demarking where we're at on our timeframe. So we're still on track with the goal of being, you know, bidding May and June of this year and starting construction thereafter. Just some update on some of the ongoing activities. We've got things happening out on the site. The site survey was completed, infiltration was, testing was completed, environmental investigation is, I think, has a couple loose ends. The traffic study is in progress, and we're hoping to be able to coordinate a meeting with the administration to kind of get an update on that in the next couple weeks. And the geotechnical investigation out on the site, that's where they go and drill all the holes for foundations and retaining walls and things like that, is beginning this week, I believe, with some clearing. On the agency municipal submissions, this is, that process is going to be a very lengthy and involved, but just a couple highlights. We are planning to submit for variance. I know we talked about this at the last meeting, and I was hopeful that we might be able to avoid that. We are going to have to go ahead and submit for the variance for the building height, and that would be submitted at the beginning of December in order to get on the, I believe it would be their January meeting. And then the land development submission, we're targeting early January for the submission for that. Just a couple, like, big picture kind of building design items. The programming and planning is, I want to say, complete, but we're still massaging, use that word to kind of describe. The teacher-staff meetings, we've had a lot of administrative team meetings, and actually the teacher-staff meeting started today. So I know what I'm going to show you today already has things that are obsolete, but we're going to, you know, we just want to keep coming to you and kind of showing the progress over time, even though what we're showing you is still a work in progress. And then we will be coming back at the December meeting and talk a little bit about some of the theme for the character of the building, especially on the inside. So just, I know you guys have gotten used to kind of seeing this graphic of our floor plans. This is the middle floor, the main floor of the building, and I really just wanted to highlight a couple points of things that have adjusted since the last time we were here at the board level. If you see the yellow dotted area with the blue text, one of the things that has happened with the building is that we've gone to more of a distributed administrative area within the building. So the idea is that adjacent to the secure main entry, we would have kind of the main office with the head administration for the building. On this middle floor, and then we would have the nurse. And we want to group the administration and behavioral health together. The second thing that kind of ties into this is that the grade level distribution in the building has changed. Previously, we had talked about kind of one wing being K-1, 2, and then the other building being 3, 4, 5, and it's adjusted now so that it's K and 1 are on a floor together. So they're kind of like a two-grade school within a school. Yeah, K-1, and then 2 and 3 then would be on this middle level. So you can see here that we have 2 and 3 grouped together as like a school within a school, and then on the upper floor, we have 4 and 5. So the, from an administrative standpoint, in addition to the main office and nurse happening on this floor, we have the administration for the 2nd and 3rd grade. So there would be a principal and, you know, counselors, and some space for, you know, some behavioral health counseling, some itinerant or outside agencies to come in and use the spaces. So that's a pretty, you know, significant change. You'll see that as we go through these graphics that we're starting to see a little bit more detail on the plans from the last time we were here. You'll see that we're showing some furniture and casework and really thinking about how each of those spaces are going to operate. Those are the things that we're meeting with staff with currently, so they are still in flux. And the hope would be that after this first round of teacher meetings and staff meetings, we have kind of come to a general direction as to what's happening in all of the spaces. We may still be finessing exactly what cabinetry or what furniture that is going in those spaces, but we generally know that we have the right kind of configuration of spaces and the right things in order to support its function. So once again, you'll see on this graphic in that kind of pink lower corner, the, you know, it would be a combined main office and grade 2, 3 administration in the light pink, and then the darker magenta color is the nurses' area. And, you know, it has grown significantly just to try to anticipate the volume of students that we are going to have in the building. This is just the snapshot of the lower level. Once again, we have the K-1 grade grouping, and this all really dovetails nicely with the things that the administration's been working on in terms of specials. You know, what, where the library is to support K and 1 is on the same floor. Where we have phys ed spaces for those grades are also on these floors. So by kind of doing it more by floor plate rather than by wing, I think there's a lot more logical organization to the special functions. And then you'll see over on the right-hand side is the administrative area and behavioral health area for the kindergarten and 1st grade. And once again, just that kind of core area at a larger scale, you can see that K-1 administration on the right. This is the top floor, so this is grades 4 and 5 again, and we have the library, which would really support the upper grades. It wouldn't be exclusively 4 or 5, but it would be kind of that 2, 3, 4, 5 grouping. We've got some music spaces. We've got the, so we added some music spaces up here on the 2nd floor, and I think that that addressed both the organization of like general music instruction but also instrumental. And since a lot of the instrumental is happening in the upper grades, you know, the location of having the music up here makes a lot of sense. You know, art's still located kind of in the center there, and then we've added the 4th and 5th grade administration and behavioral health area over on the right. And this is the same site plan that we showed you last time. We haven't updated the rendering, but just to kind of point out that one of the areas that we've been concentrating a lot of refinement has been on trying to make sure that the bus drop-off and pickup area accommodates the right number of buses and that traffic can come in using this lower road. So this graphic just kind of shows buses being able to come in in the driveway behind the school. We've added kind of a turnaround loop there at the end, and then they can file into their stalls, and we're able to get 25 of those kind of designated bus parking spaces, so really two waves is achievable. So we're still refining, kind of working our way around. You'll start to see on the plan that we're starting to look at playground areas. We're going to have another follow-up meeting with the administration to talk about those, but really just kind of trying to dial in the level of detail and really work out the bugs on things on the site. And I think that that was it for us tonight. Any questions on any of that?
Could you go back? Couple things I wanted to point out. Let's stop here at the library. That close-up one, can you do the close-up one? No, one of the things that I, that's sort of exciting about the library space is that you can have, it's sort of 21st century in a sense, because we're going to have in the lower left, it's kind of a darker shade of blue there. You'll see this lab that'll be for coding, which we're labeling as a steam room, but a, like, technology-based steam-related activity in that space. You have two distinct areas for instruction or classroom, and then you have that outdoor garden outside there, which is kind of a unshaded, uncolored space that's on the roof of the building that looks out on the hillside. And if you can picture the NAMM's property, it's pretty high up there, so that's going to be a magnificent view of Bethel Park from that, from that space. So just the opportunity for the space to really support and take our curriculum to the next level. Those two things I just pointed to, we don't have at all in the elementary program. That's coming. That'll be added to our students' experience, and we wanted to make sure that people could get excited about those things happening. Same with those environmental classrooms, those outdoor classrooms down on the ground floor, one kind of under the, whatever you call it, the overpass. So again, that, those spaces aren't in our curricular program, but environmental instruction's very much something we can enhance in our science programming with units on trees or units on water, you know, watersheds, units on landforms and so forth can be done really well, right there on the site. It's going to be magnificent in that sense. So it's a lot of exciting things. So that, she made reference to that library media center on the top floor, but there's also one for the primary reader with board books and picture books, site books, site word books, all sorts of age-appropriate materials parsed out in that learning space so that it's just right for kids. And the other feature, I think, if you could find the right picture to show this, is we've been saying all along how you can make a big school feel small, and it's the hallway corridors, for instance, and if, that's a good one right there. So if you're, if you're coming down the left-hand, light-green shaded hallway there, you know, you're seeing one-size corridor opens up to a wide learning space, down to a narrow corridor to a wide learning space. You've created these little pods, little smaller neighborhoods that open up into a shared space that you can, you can have like group work out there and so on. It makes the hallways not quite so long and cavernous, but it also enhances this instructional opportunity with the design. Mr. Johnson, am I missing anything else that we've gotten? You were there today a lot for those meetings, so what were the things that got the most buzz? Turn on your mic.
You hit them pretty good, but, I mean, I think the meetings were very productive today with your colleagues that were here, and, you know, the staff had a lot of great ideas, I think, that were, you know, more on the micro level as far as, you know, really digging into, I think, what we'll be showing up in the plans in the future. But as far as the general structure of the facility, I think, you know, everything that you mentioned and that you went over is on par with what we talked about today.
Yeah, I think it starts to become a little bit easier to kind of understand, too, because I think that there were some questions last time about like the capacity of that library media center, like how many groups of kids could be in there? And if you look at what we have in this layout, now, it's probably adjusted since the meetings today, but essentially, if you include that darker blue area, there's enough room for like four distinct classes to be in that space simultaneously. So, you know, last time, I think we were just showing like a big blue box, and it's like, what does that mean? Well, now you can start to see, you know, what that means in terms of that not only is there a lot of capacity, but there, those spaces are kind of nestled away from each other, and some of them take on a little bit more of a exploratory, you know, like research focus. Some of them are like things like coding. Some of them are just casual spaces for kids to be able to go and kind of either do teamwork or, you know, kind of decompress with a book or whatever they're working on. So I think each time we present the plans, you can kind of start to get a little bit more sense of that. You know, it is a big building, so you do still see some of these rooms where, that are blank, but that's because we are trying to test-fit a couple different classroom layouts, for instance, with teachers to determine which one is rising to the top, and then that layout will be populated across all the, all the classrooms. So we definitely are trying to focus on standardizing things like classroom layouts. Now kindergarten, obviously, is going to look very different than 5th grade, you know, but, but somewhere between kindergarten and 1st grade, it's probably going to transition from one type of classroom to another. There might be, you know, maybe there's two different layouts for classrooms, maybe there's three or four, but that's kind of the idea is that the reason you see some of that kind of like naked classrooms is because we haven't, you know, gelled on which one rises to the top. But that's part of, Dr. Jan Sandy's scheduled some really nice opportunities for us to meet with over the course of the next two weeks, I believe, to come in the morning and have teachers, you know, all be able to stop in and see what's going on and weigh in on classrooms at each one of the different schools, so.
Cassie, the big winner for me was the art department that came all out, all above about these casework on wheels, so they can set up a kindergarten instructional program, roll it out, and then roll it back in again, and they were pretty excited about that.
That was the coolest thing with the staff today, and you touched on it with the library space, but just the flexibility of these spaces as they're being designed, I think, is, you know, for like somebody that's going to be scheduling a building, that's awesome because it gives you, you know, the opportunity to do it right, and I think, and to be efficient. But then when you look at it from the perspective of the instructors, I think we're going to have a lot of opportunities to, you know, team teach and do even some peer mentoring type things with the kids that we've done extracurricularly, you know, prior to having a facility like this, but now I think we can maybe engrain some of it in what we, what we do. So it was nice. Yep.
I can just add one little piece, because I did sit in on those meetings today. I think what folks really, really enjoyed was the fact that, Cassie, you mentioned this is an evolution. In other words, it wasn't a one-and-done meeting with folks. Come in, we'll talk to you, tell you what you're going to get, you can give us a point or two, and then you're on your way. This is going to be, take multiple meetings to get folks to where, to a final stage. Today was a great jump from the conceptual first map to, hey, we're actually looking at spaces, and to Jay's point, the flexibility and working with Draw, they're really trying to make this work to, so that the teachers feel comfortable and that the ultimate goal is to benefit the students. And the flexibility of Draw today was just amazing. I think the teachers saw that. They walked away very excited, and I think they felt very confident in the process, and I think they're looking forward to continuing it. So hats off to Draw Collective and the work that you did today. It was very essential, and thank you.
Dr. Walsh pointed out some of those pod spaces on the K and 1st grade floor. I was just curious, I'm trying to kind of picture those in my head. Do you have like rough approximations for the dimensions of those? I know you're constantly, you know, moving and working with them, and I'm just curious what type of spaces our students will have to work with.
So first of all, just to go back down to the K and 1st grade floor, what we're currently showing, I'm sorry, I'm pointing to the wrong side. On the kindergarten side, we, I know we've showed pictures of some samples of other schools. This is what we were kind of seeing as more like the locker lobby.
Okay.
So we weren't necessarily thinking that kindergarten is coming out into those halls. I think, I mean, frankly, in a lot of ways, a kindergarten room is an activity center, so.
Right.
You know, we've kind of pushed more of the space into the classrooms and made those gathering spaces in the hall more about just like morning arrival and departure and getting your stuff in a, in a locker. When we come over to 1st grade and then the rest of the way up through the 5th grade, we have more of those kind of open activity centers. And I'm going to say that, so there's, the first one up here is a little bit smaller. It's actually, I believe, feeding four rooms, and then as we come down, this one might be feeding five rooms, and then this one feeds five rooms, and then we have a little wide space here. I mean, you can see that this is roughly the length of two and a half classrooms, so I'm going to say it's about 75 feet long by about 20, I believe it's about 22 feet wide.
Okay, so a pretty wide space.
So it's a really, pretty decent-sized space, and, you know, one of the discussion items that we're going to have with, with teachers in general, too, is like, you know, are there things that might traditionally be in the classroom that could push into that space? You know, like activity centers or, you know, do we maybe make sinks out here in these activity areas instead of putting a sink in every single classroom? You know, and so some of that dialogue's going to happen, but that's about what they are, and that's how, when you look on the 2nd through the, through the 5th, they're more consistent with this large area. And you can see on this floor, we're starting to show some furniture in there, some activity tables and in the hallways as well.
That's very helpful for envisioning it. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Hopefully for our next board meeting, I mean, I know in next board meeting, we said we're going to talk about theme, but we should have kind of that first pass of feedback from the general education teachers, and we will be able to kind of maybe talk a little bit more about where that seems the dust is settling in that area. We've been really focused a lot on this core area because frankly, in a lot of ways, it's the most nebulous, because the number of rooms that you need for the number of teachers that you're going to need and how you're just going to schedule the building, those are very different from where you're at today, whereas the classrooms, there's a couple things that are going to be significantly different, but we know that there's a certain number of kids and we need a certain number of rooms in order to achieve that. That's, that's a lot more straightforward. So from a, at this early stage, we want to make sure we've got the right amount of space for all those specials, because that's the thing that's most different, probably, for when you go to this building from what it is today. Okay? Any other questions?
Do you have any, do you have any approximation on when the traffic study may be completed?
So the, do you remember, it needs to be submitted with the application for land development, so it definitely will be done for the January submission. But we anticipate having some preliminary things for discussion prior to that.
Okay, thanks.
And we're meeting with them Thursday, and hopefully we'll have like a preview, and then we'll schedule the meeting with the administration to kind of see where things are falling out. But I know that your traffic engineer, which is HRG, has been in communication with the township's traffic engineer, which is Gateway, and they've, they've had some back and forth. So hopefully, when it does get submitted, it's not like, you know, it's, they're not seeing it kind of for the first time.
Any questions or?
It's Sharon. Hi. I just want to say thank you so much. I thoroughly enjoy how you are engaging the staff and the administration and really co-creating with our district the building, and I think that's wonderful. I'm excited to hear what our teachers envision for the different spaces and ways we can improve our educational programming and offerings to do really exciting things that help our students move forward in their education. I did have one question about the gym. Is that a peaked ceiling over the gym? I had heard some questions about how high the ceiling was in the gym space.
Okay, so just to go back, we have a, we have a gym, which is on the main floor, and it has a dividing wall, it has a very high ceiling. It is not a peaked ceiling, it's just a kind of a traditional flat-roofed gym. On the lower level, we have our physical education space, which is a, has a lower ceiling. The idea was that either or both of these two scenarios could happen. The one on the lower level could be focused on some of the gross motor skills that are really a focus of the primary physical education, and the gym that's on the upper level would be, could be for the upper grades that do a lot of kind of gain- be, could be for the upper grades that do a lot of kind of game, play games and, you know, balls and things like that. Or it could be that the lower-level phys ed spaces are focused on traversing walls and dance and other types of movement, and the big spaces for large game-type events, and that the two spaces are, you know, used for K5, you know, and they're not differentiated by grade. I think that the district has the potential to either schedule them one way or the other, depending on how the PE program and the curriculum adapts in the new building. I think that this building gives you an opportunity to have different types of phys ed spaces. So if you heard questions about the height of the ceiling, I'm going to guess it was for the lower phys ed space, but I hope that that answers your question.
I think it does. In other words, if someone needs to play basketball, they can do that in the gym, and that should be fine.
Yes.
And the only last thing I wanted to say is I want to take this opportunity to let everyone know that at last week's PA School Boards Conference, Draw Collective won the prestigious mini golf hole award by very popular votes, so congratulations, it was very nice, and I don't want you to get out of there without giving you kudos for that.
Yeah, it's the highlight of the year, you know. The miniature golf hole that we won, so.
It was nice, well, there were a lot of architects who submitted holes in that little golf course there, so you did a great job.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations. Yeah, and Mrs. Janisak, I mean, we, one of the things that happened today, I think, is all the special area teachers, department chairs were in meeting with the team going over the designs, looking specifically, and most brought elementary teachers with them, and phys ed didn't bring their elementary person with them, so they have to move that. We need to get more feedback from an elementary phys ed person in order for them to see the vision on how that lower-level space can be used.
That's what I had thought, it just made sense to use that smaller space for things where you don't need a really high ceiling, so I get where you're going with that. Thank you.
We also, in our discussion as things evolve, we talked about how to, how, what we can do, Draw can do differently to raise that height just a little bit more, so we're still investigating that. So it might not necessarily stay as low as it's initially thought to be, so we're looking to raise the roof, if you will. Thank you.
That means the administration suite gets really short ceilings and no insulation, so good luck with that.
Okay. Well, thank you again.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys, and have a great evening. Next on the agenda is public comments on agenda items. Do we have any call-ins?
No callers.
I just wanted to say.
We've got to come.
It's actually, it's on behind the cover.
You've got to come up and state your name and address for the record.
Marcia Slazek Burge, 5A501 Bryan Drive. I actually wanted to just express some community input, if you will, into the facilities, basically the K through 5 building. I just wanted to remind everybody and maybe let our architects know well, as well, the importance of the music program to our community. I think that our community usually sees the most visual part of our music program, which is the high school with like their Top 21 and the Spring Musical and the marching band, et cetera. And I understand this because when you're at a football game and you see that 185-member marching band stretch across the field and make that turn during hot time, it is a majestic sight. That turn back towards the crowd, to me, is like the Wizard of Oz when it turns to But I know what it takes to get there, and it all starts in those lower grades.
You got this.
Sorry, I have a special relationship with this, so I just wanted to say this, and I think a lot of people in the community do, and I just want them to understand, I want everybody to understand that. So it starts at those lower grades when those teachers are listening to Hot Cross Buns repeatedly airing off keynotes repeatedly, over and over and over again. And all three of my children went through the after-school jazz band program introducing our children's different styles of music. These patient parents and teachers worked together to include our special needs kids, even, they even contend with wild cards like my son. So my son in sixth grade, which is part of this, our music program starts in, the fourth, the band starts in the fourth grade. So he'd been in the band for two years, he goes into sixth grade with Mr. Nell. He comes home so mad. Mr. Nell wanted him to play his assigned part, which was part two, which he described as boring. I didn't even know what part two was. I was just sitting there going like, what is he talking about? So I talked to Mr. Nell, and it turns out, my son has been going rogue and playing part one in concerts for him and Mr. Born for two years. I had no idea. Mr. Nell talked to my son through his frustration and explaining how important each part of piece of music is. He let him know that with hard work and improvement, he could earn the part one selection in the next concert. So he kept practicing and eventually got to play part one in IMS. And now then the marching band, I'm sitting there thinking to myself, we see all these kids on Friday nights, and how many of these children can go back to fourth and fifth and sixth grade, and in this case, this K through 5 environment, where our participation rate is so high and when they, they're just starting out? And point to those moments like with Mr. Nell while they sat there and spoke to them. So I wanted to let them know that, to let you know that, and just how special that space in the music program is to our children. Our music program promotes mental health, team-building, kindness, inclusion. I've seen the kids that could have been left behind star in our musicals. I've watched our marching band cheer on and support other bands after their performances. Our music program is accomplishing many of the goals that we talk about for our district in the rather, in the regular course of their day. I just wanted our architects to know how important it is to our community and that it is a high-caliber program and does have community support, and I just know that this K through 5 building is the starting point, and I just wanted to make sure that there's Was given consideration it should serve, because it's more than what happens at the icicle. It happens, it's going to happen at this building, I hope, too.
I can assure the board that that is very much the case. I think if you can refer to your drawings, you're going to see that music suite behind the LGI, large rehearsal spaces, small practice rooms for lessons, three general music classrooms. It's complete, and in fact, we had the music department, after their work today, took the drawings home, and before I got back here earlier this evening, they had already returned them with pencil suggestions on the kind of casework they want in there. They're already down to casework, shelving, fixtures, technology, that the work that Draw Collective has done is met their sniff test all the way to the, down to the finest piece of sawdust that they want you to include in the drawing. So we're confident that the music department will be as good, if not better than ever, coming out of these spaces.
There's a small parking lot under our building, it's white.
Now, the scale is done, but I can assure you that there is music rooms on each level to accommodate each grade level, so that is something else that has really been thought about. As somebody that did marching band in high school here in Bethel Park and had a child go through the band program, I understand music, arts, theater are huge in this district, and it is being incorporated in. I'm, they were up there, go ahead.
Yeah, I was.
You got to find a microphone.
I just wanted to, because I didn't specifically delineate how many spaces, I think you guys did a really good job with the summary, I wanted to just reiterate. We have three general music classrooms, those would be scheduled music for the building. We have a kind of a band instrumental gathering space, we have an orchestra instrumental gathering space, and then we have five small, I mean, they're not small, they're generous, like group of 10 type, 10 to 15 practice rooms, so we have five of those. In addition to that, we have the LGI with the performance area on the LGI. So just to kind of, since I didn't give you the counts, I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Karen.
Any other call-ins? Any other speaking? Next up, committee reports. Any committee reports?
It's Sharon. I did want to share quickly, I will save my report from the PA School Boards Conference for next week, since it is more about policy and such, but in terms of facilities, there were a lot of furniture vendors at the conference, and I did investigate many of those options and talked to them and brought back some catalogs that I'll drop off at the administration building for you all. And one of the things that I was really interested in were the options for furniture that moves for children who need to move. I don't mean rearrange the furniture, I mean chairs that you can unscrew at the bottom to allow the seat to rock and wiggle, instead of a separate wiggle cushion, and like rockers that sit on the floor for kids who need to rock. There are just a lot of various options, and I'll drop that off for administration to take a look at. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, Mr. Modrak for the Facilities and Services Committee.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Walsh.
I think we're going to have to take these one at a time.
Yes, well, there's 11 items here tonight, eight of them that we'll be voting on when we are approving some agreements. Two are discussions, and one will be an informational piece from Mr. McCoslin. So starting with our number one, approval of proposal of Geotech Services. Moving that the Board of Directors approves administration's recommendation to approve proposal number 40, thought 2750-dash DPR from ECS Mid-Atlantic, in the amount of $68,900 to provide Geotech services for the new K5 Elementary School.
Sir, second. Motion by Mr. Modrak, second by Mr. Gresbeck. Any discussion? I do have a question, this has started, correct? Do we know how long and how much disruption, because there were some phone calls that recess wasn't happening?
So it takes about two days to clear and about five more days to do all the drilling, so about a total of seven days.
And how long is recess going to be impacted at NAMM?
Recession is good, we took care of that yesterday and today, so the recess space is back. Just one day delay with recess, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Second item, approval of assumption and release agreement. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the assumption and release agreement between the Bethel Park School District and Bryan Holmes, a successor by merger to Tom Coloway, Inc., regarding the Wallace Avenue Stormwater Detention Pond on the property of Neil Armstrong Middle School. The school district will hereafter assume responsibility for the detention pond, thereby absolving Bryan Holmes for all, from all rights and responsibilities to the detention pond.
Second.
Move by Mr. Modrak, second by Mr. Gresbeck. Does our solicitor have any other? Do you have any? This is a legal matter, so I didn't know if there was anything else to add.
Sure, this matter was reviewed and vetted by both legal and some of your engineering professionals. We believe that we've communicated all of the liabilities and the opportunities that are associated with the proposal, and it's ready for your consideration this evening.
Anything further? Go ahead and.
Motion carries.
Third one, approval of design consulting agreement. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to ratify the design consulting agreement with the Children's Museum of Pittsburgh for the new K5 Elementary School.
Second.
Move by Mr. Modrak, second by Mr. Gresbeck. Dr. Walsh.
Yeah, sure, this is, this is an exciting one. We're really pleased that the Pittsburgh Children's Museum was going to partner with us on examining the designs for the elementary center, looking for more ways to sort of create or alter the design to make it more educational, more interesting, more engaging for kids, as well as more human-centered design as well. This is a big part of the Children's Museum expertise, particularly steam spaces and interactive learning spaces, so we're excited to partner with them. And in fact, we have our, we'd like to have our first meeting with them end of next week to take the drawings down, to show where we are with it, and let them start to create opportunities to make them even better.
Sounds great. Anything else? Mr. McCoslin?
Motion carries.
Next, payment for Independence Middle School Phase One renovations. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve payment for invoice number 9226-07 to SiteLogic IQ Energy Services, Inc., for the total of $1,491,414 for the Phase One Giza Project renovations at IMS. The funds will be paid for, from Construction Fund 31.
Second.
Move by Mr. Modrak, second by Mr. Gresbeck. Any questions? Mr. McCoslin?
Motion carries.
Our next one is payment for bus garage renovation project. The Board of Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve payment for invoice number 2134-08 to the Hayes Design Group in the amount of $9,982.39 for the bus garage renovation project.
Second.
Move by Mr. Modrak, second by Mr. Gresbeck. Any questions, concerns? Mr. McCoslin?
Motion carries.
Moving on, next, payment for Independent Middle School Phase One renovations. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve payment for invoice number 2126-15 to the Hayes Design Group for a total of $16,033.75 for the Phase One project renovations at Independence Middle School. The funds will be paid from Construction Fund 31.
Second.
Move by Mr. McCoslin, second by Mr. Gresbeck. Questions?
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Next one, payment for Independence Middle School Phase Two renovations. The Board of School Directors. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve payment for invoice number 2201-10 to the Hayes Design Group for a total of $97,016.75 for the Phase Two renovations at Independence Middle School.
Second.
Move by Mr. Modrak, second by Mr. Gresbeck. Any questions?
Motion carries.
Next item, adoption of the Agreement of Purchase and Sale in Lieu of Condemnation. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to adopt the Agreement of Purchase and Sale in Lieu of Condemnation by and between Mrs. Suzanne Pettapiece as presented contingent upon mutual execution of the same.
Second.
Questions? And I know the solicitor can...
As the board is aware, this is the product of collaborative effort between the property owner and the district. Although the district was prepared to move forward in a less collaborative way as permitted by law, we were presented with the opportunity and we were pleased to do so, to negotiate directly with Mrs. Pettapiece for the acquisition of these properties that are, that have been identified as critical for the district's needs moving forward for facilities purposes. This agreement contemplates consideration in the amount of $1,460,000 and will anticipate a closing sometime in advance of March, late March of 2023.
Any questions on the agreement or for the solicitor?
Disclaimant. Thank everybody who was in the process. There's a lot of people who were involved and we got to the point in a very good way that's beneficial to all. But thank you, everybody, for your efforts.
Absolutely. Mr. McCoslin?
Mr. McGregor?
I'm a yay.
Motion carries.
Our next item, information piece, financial report from Mr. McCoslin.
Really, nothing has changed other than the additional interest you've earned and the payments you've approved for the projects. The only thing I might draw your attention to is on the Fund 31 project for Phase Two. Those Phase Two budget numbers are what we're really working on with SiteLogic currently to hone in what those numbers will be as the quotes have come in. So probably when we meet on the 22nd, I think we're planning to schedule a meeting and advertise it, we'll have those figures probably narrowed in and I'll be able to update that sheet for you. But other than that, it's the standard payments that have gone out for the month and the interest that's been earned. If you have any specific questions, you can ask.
Okay. No questions? All right. Sharon, any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next two items are discussion items. First one will be the naming of the new elementary center. So, Dr. Walsh, do you wanna...
Sure, thank you. So the drawings that the board has seen have all been labeled Bethel Park Elementary Center. And it occurs to the administration that we never really formally asked the board to codify the name of what this building will be so that it can be incorporated into the designs, into all of the permitting applications, can be even the signage that would be appearing on the driveways into the school, et cetera, can be done. And we did some polling among district people here in Bethel Park administration and came up with some suggestions. Of course, Bethel Park Elementary Center was the first suggestion since that's what we've been calling it for 12 months. Bethel Park Elementary School also has a nice sound to it. That's what we're building after all. But it also gives potential for the board to look at other possibilities, one of which is to incorporate the name of the school with the theme. The group from Draw Collective tonight was talking about coming in December and sharing some of the details that they have envisioned for the creative use of theme throughout the building. And they're gonna tell us a lot about national parks and park spaces and how that can be incorporated into design. And so one of the suggested names that we came with was just Park Elementary School or Park Elementary Center. And that also leads us to think about the history here in Bethel of naming schools after great Americans. And so having founded the national park system, we thought Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School would also be a possibility for you to consider. And finally, we also couldn't resist the temptation to including things like creativity and innovation in the name of the school. So like a Bethel Park Education and Creativity Center is certainly a mouthful, but it does speak to the values and the goals of the district has for a space like that. And the last piece, there was also a suggestion that came up from the ranks to call it the Thomas Knight Elementary School. We didn't really rank these, didn't prioritize them. We just wanted to give you some options for discussion, see what happens among the board's conversation, and then maybe we let it sit for a month and hear, get some feedback from our community, folks that are watching tonight, or hear about this conversation and have some suggestions. Okay?
Anyone? Go ahead.
Just from the list, I do like Bethel Park Elementary School. I think just keeping it simple, we have Bethel Park High School, I have Bethel Park Elementary Sometimes if you get too creative, it's a little bit more jumbled. I just, it's a school. That's what we're building and it's Bethel Park School. So I like Bethel Park Elementary School. That's where I am on that one. If anybody else wants to chime in, go ahead.
Yeah, I really have no particularly strong feelings on the topic. I tend to agree with Mr. Scalzo. I don't think we need to necessarily make it overly complicated, but you know, if we decide that we want to continue with the tradition of great Americans, I think that that suggestion was, you know, fine by me as well. I think those, those two would probably be my top two.
I mean, we have independence as a theme in our formation of our country. I don't know whether we have other themes that have resonated for over 300 years. I don't know. Just we look at another one possibility. Or like I said, as simple as Bethel Park.
Well, and what was sort of doubly nice about the Independence Middle School name is the fact that that's, you know, the middle school is the year of transition from dependence to independence adulthood. And so we, in addition to being the Americana theme, it also works well in terms of the theme of the school's purpose or mission. So we liked that idea and we didn't really build off that other than to try and tease out the theme of the school in the name, not that it has to be involved like Bethel Park High School doesn't have the theme at all.
Right. This is Sharon. I, I would prefer if we were naming after someone to do something local like the Fred Rogers Elementary Center, which is a nice tie-in to the Children's Museum over Roosevelt. But I agree that Bethel Park Elementary Center, Elementary School, that's fine as well. I like the innovative, what was it, Innovation and Creativity Center, but that does become a mouthful and it's hard to use the acronym. So I'm, I'm good with anything except probably Roosevelt.
Yeah, that's another problem we gotta worry about is IMS kind of flows easy, NAMs flows easy, BPEC. I don't know. Does that flow as well? BPEC, E P E.
Well, you know, I was thinking, I do like school better than center. It seems more personal and more inviting, you know? You know, I had written down a few of my suggestions and the Dr. Walsh Elementary Center didn't make it on there.
Thank you.
I like the Bethel Park Elementary.
Thank you.
You ever watch those football, you know, on football games, they say the Ohio State University? Why not the Bethel Park Elementary? Because there's only one. That's my two cents.
Ooh, that's, that's not a Penn State thing, though. It'd have to be we are Bethel Park Elementary. Veto.
I concur with everyone. I like the, I like school. It's just, you know, keeps the tradition that we value in Bethel Park, you know? Yeah. The Bethel Park Elementary is kinda, it's kinda nice, actually. I'm for the Bethel Park Elementary School. I kind of, I know we kept calling it a center, I guess, because we thought we were bringing everybody together, but it will be the Elementary School in Bethel Park. So I like Elementary School. BPES kind of fits that initials that we have. I mean, we all call it BPHS, IMS. We are very much acronyms, so BPES kind of flows off a whole lot better. But I think, you know, we would all encourage those that are listening, those that watch later, to let us know what you all think.
Okay, I think we're onto the next discussion.
It's Sharon. I just, it occurred to me, unity. We are coming together as one. Just throwing that out there. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Discussion item, formation of an ad hoc committee to study the options for possible uses of the elementary schools that are to be closed.
Right. So we'll be obligated in, within the years before we close the buildings to have Act 34 public hearings, but we also have to have an idea of the intended uses of those facilities for a couple of reasons. Number one, the municipality is very anxious to know and how they can be a part of those decisions and how they could support those spacers or take over those spaces for their purposes, as well as other businesses that are looking at our spaces. Some of the neighbors are looking at parcels as well. So I think it's time to start the conversation. And I think what you're proposing here, Mr. Modrak, is that we'd have maybe a joint committee that would involve district, community, business, and municipality people on the, on the committee. What kind of makeup were you talking about here?
You're reading my mind.
Well, let's hear it.
No, just, so we get representation of our community, so as you just stated. So municipal officials, some citizens, members of this governing body here, and just start, it's, time will go fast, so as we get together and reach out to our municipality and start making our notifications and go through with that and hopefully like this, it's our properties, we will chair the act committee and have our public meetings and go forward.
Let's just say Mr. Modrak will be chairing those committees.
You gotta talk to Mrs. Modrak.
Do you have any proposed breakdown for that committee of like what that would look like? I know Dr. Walsh...
I would imagine some kind of body of, you know, eight to nine, 10, something that's functional, something that, you know, is representative of what is out in the community.
And that's what, that's what, how it was approached to us, Mr. Christensen, who is not here tonight, and I, from the municipality, like eight or nine, some from the school board, some from the municipality, some from the municipality inner workings. And, you know, they were looking at business leaders, too, because that's gonna have an impact on them. And that's, that was like...
Some citizens.
I was gonna say, I would very strongly advocate for, you know, general citizens. I understand that business owners have, you know, a particular lens that, you know, they are able to look at for possible use for that space, but I mean, just while we have...
I mean, there were citizens on there, but those were the three that they had...
Understood. I'm saying non-business owners as well, because just while we were in this meeting, we got two emails about people concerned about gym space, right? So, you know, we're gonna be potentially, who knows, could be losing some of that space depending on what decisions are made. And so I think it's important that that perspective is captured in addition to things like business and the municipality and the school board. I think it's very important that, you know, parents and just citizens at large who have different use cases for the facilities also have a say in that process.
I think at this time in our, as Dr. Walsh always communicates with the municipality, we'll get some indication from their end in regards to who they'd like to see on. Obviously, like you were saying, Dan, with the gym spaces there, you know, the municipality is one of the big...
Right, there.
Bodies in that, too. And hopefully someone like Chuck Stover would be involved to see his perspective. But, you know, if citizens are interested or community members are interested and some of our business members have those door hats, you know, they can reach out to us and we'll start going through and see what's a comfortable number, if we can get it to work, to stay functioning. But we all want, we do want to start progressing because this, like I said repeatedly, this timing's gonna go fast.
Right. And I think to your point, Mr. Gresbeck, I think that we certainly can have opportunities for input to the committee so that those kinds of groups and voices are heard and appreciate their needs. But to Mr. Modrak's point, I think we want to make sure the committee can function and not be so unwieldy...
Agreed.
...that nothing can get accomplished because there's too many cooks in the kitchen.
Yeah. You definitely get difficult once you, once you get over 10. And I just say that because I think the most common comments I've heard aren't necessarily about the elementary center. It really is what's gonna happen with those spaces. Those are the questions that I've getting, I'm getting over and over again from, you know, people in our community. Sounds good.
Good. That's all I have for my agenda here tonight, Mrs. Walsh Turner. No, I'm, you need a timeout.
Moving on to, hold on, comments? Anyone calling?
No callers.
Actually, you know what? For the name. What did you say, creative?
Name and...
Oh, Mike Fasuka, 5620, directly across from you from the new extravagant, non-named building. What did you say, creative, innovated?
Creativity and Innovation Center.
Could that be a sub-name, you know, Bethel Park Elementary School, A, creative? Yeah, like a... Yeah, 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 yeah. I like it. What's the actual, what's the physical address of the building? Is it King School or is it...
It has not, not yet been determined because there's three parcels, two of which line up on King School Road. And so my understanding is, is that the municipality wants us to consolidate the parcels and then we'll name the road coming off and it'll be on that road, it'll be named, which...
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. We like it. I think a lot of us like that. New protective. Any board comments tonight?
Just, some people may see the blue shirts we have up here beginning. Congratulations to the high school team and administration staff for putting together an excellent project. And Dr. Walsh, I mean, you're sure, how was the event down in Washington, DC?
Long.
Long.
More than 15, I think you guys got on.
Clopped in over four hours, but actually, Mr. Valani is gonna be here next week at the board meeting with the, with the plaque from the Department of Education to share with the board and talk more about it. But it was, it was definitely an honor to be in that room with those distinguished school districts and represented us in the Department of Education, kind of together celebrating best of public ed in, in the United States. You know, what was kind of cool about it is the majority of the groups there were elementary and middle schools, so it was the minority of the schools being honored were high schools. So I think it's a distinction that we can be particularly proud of. And it's coming from a, you know, a tradition, a tradition in Bethel Park of excellence and high expectations. So it, you know, we're with confidence now to hang our hat on some things that are definitely best in class here in Bethel Park. We heard a lot about the music program here tonight and, you know, how important it is to our community. That's a great example of that best in class expectation that we have. And here again, you know, the academic achievement of the high school is another shining star or another example of that best in class. It was great to be there and be a, participate in it and, and I'm teasing when I say it was long. It's just, you know, P in Pennsylvania is at the end of the list of the alphabet, so we were a good three hours into the ceremony before we were even at a chance to get to the stage.
One question. You said he's bringing the plaque.
Yes.
Can we treat it like the cup? Can we each get a weekend with it?
Sure, sure.
Again, thank you to everybody, Mr. Valani and his staff down there at the high school. All deserve recognition. Thank you.
And please... Please all take your blue shirts home and wear them with pride.
I just want to say congratulations to the high school team. They did an amazing job and to you, Dr. Walsh, and thank you to the administrative staff and all the teachers and principals who've been working on all of our construction projects. It is a lot to keep track of, and we do appreciate the amount of time that you're spending on that and keeping us updated and making sure everything keeps moving forward. We see you and we appreciate your work. Thank you.
I just have an announcement. If you haven't got your tickets yet, as Ms. Slazek had mentioned, the play is this weekend for the high school. Get out and support our many music departments, acting department, whole thing. Should be a good show, I believe, Friday and Saturday night.
Thursday.
Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. So please take a moment, and hopefully, I think, as some of us said, we'll get into the Christmas spirit a little early this year.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to say thank you for everyone who came to the Day of Healing that the municipality held on Sunday, and particularly Mrs. Hoppy for speaking, and it was a wonderful day of coming together and healing together through the past difficulties of the past couple of years, and hopefully it's the beginning of an annual tradition. So thank you very much, and thank you for the district for your support of that as well. Thanks.
Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.